All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. As we begin today, I'm going to ask you to join me for a moment of silence before the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll walk through the rest of the agenda together. Thank you. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, next. Okay, we're gonna... This is an official city meeting. Disrupting the meeting will not be tolerated, so people will be given a warning, and then I'll ask people to leave if they are not willing to sit and let us finalize what we have before us tonight. So to start off our meeting, we'll start with roll call, and then we'll invite the interpreter up.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Assasi?
Present.
Commissioner Repar?
Here.
Commissioner Lanier?
Present.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and commissioners, can I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Jones? He had an urgent issue come up.
The moved.
Support.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it carries. Right now, I'd like to introduce our interpreter. If you need assistance tonight with interpretation services, we have someone here to assist you. Welcome.
Good evening. We're pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services this evening. This include interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. Thank you. Gracias.
Appreciate it. All right, next that will take us to our first opportunity for public comments. So there's a couple of things on our agenda tonight. We have two scheduled public hearings before us tonight. So if you are here tonight to be heard on the necessity of a one-year special assessment for enhanced services in the Downtown Improvement District, that's roll number 8768. I'm going to ask you to stay put until I open up that public hearing. And then we do have an appeals hearing tonight. So this city commission, this body, serves as an appellate body, and so we'll be hearing appeals related to special assessment nuisance roll 8764. So if you are here tonight to speak to an appeal, I'm going to ask you to stay put as well until we open that public hearing. So our first opportunity for public comment tonight are items that are specifically on our agenda that we'll be voting on. So earlier today, we had a number of standing committee meetings, and during that time, we voted on items. So if you are here to be heard on one of those items before we cast a vote on those, I'll open that up momentarily. And then at the end of the evening, we'll have a final opportunity for public comment. So the first opportunity for public comment, if you are here to be heard on action items tonight, you can come on up. We ask that you come to the podium, you share your name, the city that you live in, and we'll be giving you up to three minutes to speak. So is there anyone who wishes to be heard on an action item tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll close that opportunity for public comment, and that'll take us to our approval. Are you speaking on an action item? All right. And please refer to the action item you're speaking to.
Did I not get up to refer to that action item? I don't know why you had to tell me that three times.
I did not see you get up. Go ahead and get started.
I speak?
Go ahead.
First and foremost...
So please share your name, the city that you live in, and what action item you're speaking to.
My name is Donnie. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. I live in the Third Ward. The most brutalized, the most murdered by GRPD. I'm speaking on the action item today because I've lived here for almost 30 years, and I've seen these people get up here and orchestrate...
Donnie, what...
And I've seen them orchestrate the conversation how it's...
What agenda item are you speaking to? Well, let us know what agenda item you're talking about. Please get to it.
Thank you. Justice for Patrick. So the action item today that I speak on, are you going to keep continuing to cut me off, or...
I don't... I'm not cutting you off. Go ahead.
The action item that I would love to speak on today is a very hard nay on what they want to produce. I do not wish that there's more nuisance ordinance going downtown. I do not wish that because I have been brutalized by GRPD due to a noise ordinance that has been set hard by the commission before you. Those commissioners only listen to certain parts of the community in order to set these noise ordinances, and that is only based off of who lives downtown. That is only based off of who they care for, which is the people downtown. They don't care about the surrounding city. They care about how they can make them more comfortable with more city ordinances. That's what they care about. I do not care for the city ordinance because people are being murdered every single day, and I would love to see actionary steps that is going to be able to protect black, brown, and indigenous lives of Grand Rapids. And so that is what I would love to say on that action. It's a very hard no on the city noise ordinances or more nuisance ordinances because it gives them verification and justification in order to brutalize people who have, who can go down there, and they have the freedom of speech. They have this due to our constitutional right. It's my constitutional right to go downtown and say and do as I please with those rights. But tell me why that's being trumped by city commissioners? Tell me why that they want to continue to come up here and put in more noise ordinances that's going to continue to allow GRPD to attack protesters downtown, to be able to escalate and provide more protection for buildings and not people? Patrick?
All right, thank you. And let me just clarify one thing. There's, we don't have a noise ordinance before us tonight, and if you're here to be heard on the nuisance roll, that is a separate public hearing, and I'll ask you to wait until we open up that public hearing so that we can allow city staff to come forward and answer any questions that you may have if you have an appeal. All right. Okay, I'm going to close that first opportunity for public comment and move to the approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion?
Demote.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and communications.
Communication from Dan Coy regarding their resignation from the Urban Forestry Committee.
That is referred to our Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Christine Helms Meladick regarding structural changes in police reform.
That is received and filed.
Two communications received from Paul Mayhew regarding the April 4, 2022 death of Patrick Leoya.
And that is received and filed.
Communications, several communications received regarding Justice for Patrick Leoya.
That is received and filed.
And communication received from Sharon Reed Williams, General Counsel and Chief Regulatory Officer for Flourish, requesting the city to advise the Michigan Cannabis Regulatory Agency that Flourish is eligible for renewal of operating licenses.
And that is received and filed. All right, next that will take us to reports of city officers.
First one is a comptroller's report for the period of March 29, 2022 through April 12, 2022 in the amount of $14,756,515.65.
That is received and filed.
And treasurer's report for the period of March 29, 2022 through April 11, 2022.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that are on our agenda tonight that we discussed earlier in one of our standing committee meetings where there was a unanimous vote. So tonight, with one voice vote, we'll adopt those items. Commissioners, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Demote.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries. All right, that will take us to... So we don't have any ordinances tonight, and we do not have any city commission resolutions. So that will take us to our scheduled public hearings. As I indicated, we have two scheduled public hearings before us tonight. The very first one is a public hearing on the necessity of a one-year special assessment for enhanced services in the Downtown Improvement District. So I'll start this by having, it looks like, is Mr. Grassi here, or Mr. Kelly? Are you gonna... All right, thank you. So we'll turn this to Mr. Kelly, who is the Executive Director and President of the Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc., and let him provide a brief overview. And then we have a... I'll let you introduce others who are joining you tonight, and then I'll turn it to commissioners for questions, and then I'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Kelly, thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, commissioners. So as you mentioned, we're here tonight for a public hearing for the Downtown Improvement District. Current one-year authorization on the Improvement District expires at the end of this fiscal year, so June 30, 2022. And so we're holding the hearing tonight and ultimately seeking your approval at a future meeting to extend the Improvement District for an additional year. There are a few changes that we are proposing for the coming plan, and so we want to walk through those, and I've invited my colleague, Mr. Elidge, here to help do that. And we also have our Chair of the DID Board, Bob Herr, here. So we're going to go through this quick, and then happy to take any questions that might come up. Real quick, as a reminder for what the DID is and why we believe it's an important tool, it's been in place now for over 20 years, and is continued to use to provide enhanced maintenance and beautification services in downtown above and beyond what the city normally pays for. It's advised by a 13-member board, and its funding, which is derived from a special assessment on real property, is used to help pay for downtown ambassadors, clean team, as well as generally to keep downtown looking clean and well-maintained. Over the years, the DID's been very important in helping to keep pace with the growth that we've seen in downtown. As you see here, we've seen some tremendous development over the past five years, and as we look to the next cycle of development, in particular around housing and adding more residents and hitting our critical mass goal, we do believe that the DID will continue to provide important utility. I mentioned the ambassadors and clean team. You see some of the stats here before you, but in general, they are helping to make sure that trash is hauled away, pedestrians are assisted, and we've seen obviously a decline in some of these metrics over the past several years with the pandemic, but we are now starting to get close to pre-pandemic levels, which is why we continue to see the need for the tool. And so recognizing the importance of the tool, recognizing the ongoing growth, we, as we came upon our renewal period, we continue to work with a reauthorization committee as well as our board to make some advisements in terms of what we wanted to see going forward. We continue to conduct surveys and have conversations with current ratepayers, and because this is the first year that residents, due to a change in state statute, that we had the ability to include owner-occupied residential units and those residentially classified, we had several specific conversations with residents that you see outlined here. Based on all those conversations, we do have some recommendations for changes going forward to this one-year plan, and so I'll invite my colleague, Mr. Elidge, up now to walk through those.
Thanks, Tim, and hello and good evening, everybody. Just want to highlight quickly the changes that Tim brought up in the proposed plan here. So the first is to increase the current assessment by 5%. So this would be the first increase in that assessment since FY '20, and this will generate about $55,000 in additional revenue, which is tied directly to the services that the Improvement District is providing increasing. For example, we raised the ambassador wage from $13 an hour to $15 an hour to maintain that wage going forward. We either need to raise the assessment as we're proposing here or scale back services to maintain the rate, which we think is extremely important because the ambassadors provide a vital service to downtown. The second is to return Class II properties to the DID role, so Class II properties are private, non-tax organizations. So again, this will generate around $55,000 in revenue. Back in 2015, it changed so that these types of properties, Class II properties, the assessment that they received was no longer mandatory but voluntary. This sort of resulted in about 50% of those organizations not paying their DID assessment, which has sort of created some gaps in the budget regarding that. And so we're recognizing that those properties do benefit from the majority of the services that the Improvement District provides, but not all of them. So we're asking that they be returned to the DID role but pay an assessment that's reduced to 60% of what their assessed rate would be, and this applies to 85 properties throughout downtown. And the last is adding residentially classified properties to the DID assessment role. So we believe that this will create additional opportunities for downtown residents to be involved in downtown decision-making. We also believe it creates fairness because renters, which are Class I properties, have long paid into the DID assessment, and this will apply to 618 private residentially classified properties throughout downtown. The proposed assessment, which is $10 a month or $120 annually, would generate around $74,000 for new resident-specific services that the DID would provide. And as Tim mentioned, we've done a lot of engagement around this with residents through meetings, phone calls, both virtual and in person, as well as a survey. Through those sort of meetings, we've identified three kind of primary services that residents would look to have added or expanded in downtown, and those are enhancing pedestrian safety, so things like enhanced crosswalks or improved lighting, creating resident-specific ambassador services or expanding the ambassador services in general, and expanding investment into quality-of-life services. The last slide I have here is just sort of a next steps into the process of approving the Improvement District plan. So we're here at the public hearing, going over the changes in the plan, and then again, requesting your consideration and approval for the expansion, rather, of the Downtown Improvement District plan for one year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Herr, anything to add?
Evening, Commissioner. Mayor, I'm Bob Herr, as introduced, but have been chaired this committee since it was started some 22 years ago. We appreciate your help and support. In the prior years, the last three years, we've held the assessment flat. It has been a challenge because though the assessment's been flat, costs have gone up. As was indicated, we needed to increase salaries and wages. We were having difficulty getting staffing, but we've essentially spent down our reserves in the last three years just to hold assessments flat. I will tell you that the members of the Commission Board, all assessment payers, and work real diligently to make sure that we do control costs, we look at what we're doing, and we allocate those assessment payer dollars appropriately without... But we do need these changes just to get our fiscal house back in shape and assets you certainly consider. But thank you again. I think it's been great leverage that the city has participated in this every year, and between those private and public dollars, I think we have a very clean, safe, and fun downtown for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so commissioners, any questions or comments before I open up for a public comment? Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I see Mr. Fruit back there, so I'm not trying to steal his thunder, but I know there's going to be a question, so I thought maybe I'll head it off here. This is relates in the hearing notice, it was referenced that a property owner of a residential real property within the Business Improvement District may seek a homestead deferment for the special assessment under this act, and there was concern that that may no longer be the case, and so I just tried to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, and I understand that our counsel spoke with the city attorney on this matter a little bit earlier today. Our understanding of that is that that's language pulled directly from the state statute, and so in order to have a proper notice, we had to include it. It may not, it does not apply to the inclusion of residentially classified properties in the DID. However, we did have to include it in the notice, is my understanding, but city attorney, I defer to you on any clarification needed.
That's correct, Commissioner, and the other thing that we talked about is coming forth for the public hearing, and that we go through that, and if there's any adjustments that we need to make, we'll subsequently make that. But the language that's in there is taken right out of the relevant statute of Act 120, and as he said, it's mandatory that we have that in the notice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good clarification. All right, thank you. All right, so if you are here tonight to be heard on this special assessment, you are welcome to come forward. Again, we ask that you share your name, where you live, and then you'll be given up to three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name is Hal Fruit. I live downtown. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, commissioners, city manager for the time today, and especially city attorney. I dumped something on her lap early this morning, and we got an answer back, so I appreciate that. I would like to voice my opposition to this assessment, and let me give you a little bit of background here. DGRI is proposing a budget increase of 5%. Would like to assess the homeowners downtown, residents who live in the district $10 a month. This would generate $57,000 in new revenue. This is in addition to transferring $57,000 from the existing budget to a separate line item, which brings that up to $114,000. So it's not $114,000 that's going into this fund for the downtown residents. It's $57,000 of new money. $57,000 already exists and is in their budget. DGRI has not said how these funds will be used until the assessment has been approved. This is in spite of having numerous meetings with residents for input on quality of improvements. Some of the suggestions that have been presented, I have given to the city clerk, so he has copies of those, and just a couple, and I'll go over some of those also. DGRI has said these funds will be dedicated to enhancements that downtown homeowners want, not businesses, but to downtown residents, people who live downtown. So why am I opposed to this? Some of the suggestions I've provided you with, that you have the documentation on, are for enhanced city functions such as upgrading crosswalks from the city standard one to the one out by River House with the lights. That, in my opinion, is a city function. It's not a downtown resident function. That's a city function. The estimate for that crosswalk, according to DGRI, was $460,000 for that enhancement. The $114,000 they're asking for doesn't buy us one of those, doesn't even get us a quarter of one of those. So I'm not sure that that's even a goal, that item, because the money's not there in what they're asking for. Another suggestion is to hire additional downtown ambassadors. You heard just a moment ago that they were $15 an hour. According to the document that I provided you, that was provided to me by Mr. Kelly, it's $29.90 an hour, not 15. So if you break that down with the new funds of $57,000, that's 32 hours a week, not a measurable increase in services considering very few residents and visitors know what they do or how to contact them for assistance. Same holds true for the security team at $25 an hour or 43 hours per week. I'm not sure how much of a team...
Thank you, Mr... Thank you, Hal. Your time's up.
Okay.
All right, others who wish to be heard specifically on this special assessment?
Good evening to our mayor, our city manager, and our commission members. My name is Kathy Steindler, and I live in downtown Grand Rapids. I come before you to comment about the public hearing on the necessity of a special assessment roll number 8768. I am a longtime downtown Grand Rapids resident, living in, for 18 years, at 60 Monroe Center, right in city center. I've committed myself to living in downtown for over a decade and have actively been engaged by becoming a part of the Downtown Neighbor Network Advisory Group for several years. You're considering a recommendation of the Downtown Grand Rapids Improvement District to fund enhanced services in the downtown area. All this comes with a price to pay, and the proposal is to assess residential property owners in order to fund these enhancements. This proposed assessment is merely another tax. It's a compulsory contribution being placed on downtown residence, property owners, those who are already bearing a substantial property tax burden. And I remind all of you, all of us, everyone, is experiencing the effects of the annual inflation rate in the United States, having accelerated to 7.9% in February, the highest since January of 1982. So I'm asking that you consider the proposed assessment as if you too were a downtown resident, property owner. Don't you see that the additional tax will dampen the interest in property ownership? And isn't the goal of this city to encourage people to live downtown and to have people living downtown? Rather than incentivizing people to become property owners, the proposal that you are considering discourages ownership. And I repeat, it discourages ownership. Acceptance of the proposal of assessing the downtown property owners will impede the growth that you so desire, that you, the Grand Rapids City Commission, desire. So please, give thoughtful consideration and oppose the recommendation of imposing assessment to the downtown property owners of the requests of the Downtown Improvement District. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration, and I also want to thank you for the service to our great city of Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Kathy. All right, others who wish to be heard on this special assessment?
My name is Donnie. I live in the Third Ward. My opinion about the special assessment is that, again, we shouldn't be spending money on things that the city can't afford. As you heard before, the money is not there. We're trying to break a goal. You're adding more gentrification is what is happening, and you're pushing the people out from downtown. That's what we call gentrification. For example, there's a house for sale on Sigsby that's pushing $600,000, more than half a million dollars. That's gentrification. You up the rent, you don't up wages, and then you want to lie about what jobs pay which, pay what, you know? Some jobs pay 15, some jobs pay 29. It's actually 29, but what is it? You know what I mean? Raise minimum wage, and then it would be feasible for people to be able to afford that, but we can't. Making sidewalks, making crosswalks look more, look better, is gentrification. That's, that's an empty gesture of protection, to be completely honest. We know where the real trouble's coming from. We know who's not listening, and we know what's happening. We're going to continue to keep calling it out. We're tired of the gentrification. We're tired of your labor exploitation. We're tired of it. I say these things so that the community who watches this will come up here and question you as to what you are doing specifically for the downtown residents besides gentrification, besides labor exploitation, and besides pushing them out. Because at this point, you've proven nothing. The only thing that you've actually proven is that you care more about profits, dollar signs, and buildings rather than the people who work their whole entire lives to fund downtown. We built this city off of our blood, sweat, and tears. We built this city off of our scars, bruises, and wounds. I hope for as long as you're in that seat, you continue to listen to what we got to say, and gentrification in Grand Rapids, and gentrification around Grand Rapids, and gentrification, period, because that's not how we operating no more. Your white supremacy is being shown. I need you to check it and dismantle it. Thank you. Black Lives Matter. Justice for Patrick Leoya.
All right, others who wish to be heard on this special assessment?
Hello, my name is Emma. I live in Grand Rapids. So I noticed that you're using the word improvement, and part of your plan to improve downtown is to plant flowers. And I just find that interesting because when I work downtown every day, I see people laying on the street, and I don't know how that doesn't break you. I don't know. I have, I've worked in healthcare, I've taken care of patients, and then I've driven down the street and seen my patients after they've been done being in a facility on the street. Like, it's traumatizing to look at, and I don't know if you're even human, if you're seeing that and you're coming up with improvement to plant mother effing flowers. Like, you're either incredibly incompetent or incredibly selfish, or both, if that's what you came up with. I honestly, I don't have words for how angry I am that people continue to sleep outside, that people continue to look at them as if they're trash, and for people like you to benefit off of the people getting paid for doing virtually nothing. I don't know how you sleep at night. I don't know how you sleep at night. Also, so let's center this around Patrick Leoya, because he's not being centered. I don't know why that is not what you're discussing all day, every day. You attended his funeral, you cried. I saw that as just utter, utterly disgusting, that you can get up there and shed tears while knowing that his blood is on your hands, while knowing that you spent your time thinking about how pretty we can make it. That's what you spent your time thinking about. How pretty can we make this downtown? How much more money can we make, is what you thought about?
All right, others who wish to be heard on this special assessment?
Hi, I'm Michael. I live downtown. Thank you to everybody. Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to our city manager, and thank you to our police chief over the last couple of weeks for your transparency.
Let him, let him speak. This is an opportunity for other people to be heard.
I have appreciated that, so thank you. I also, earlier speaker mentioned had been here for a decade. I actually just moved in last fall. And love Grand Rapids, love being downtown, have enjoyed it. I've looked at the choice to pay a little bit more from a tax standpoint, whether it's city taxes or whether it's income taxes or whatever. To me, it's worth it to be downtown. When this assessment came up, it's more from a principle standpoint about why and what we're paying for the money. And in the explanation, I think on the website, it says, "Services specific to improving the quality of life for residents downtown." And then it mentions specifically safety and homelessness. For me, just, I view that as kind of a basic fundamental in terms of what the city provides service-wise. So I don't look at that as something that me choosing to live downtown and paying the extras that go along with it, that I should have a premium for safety and to deal with homelessness. And so from a principled standpoint, I don't support the increase. Had the privilege of talking to several people at the DED, and they've been wonderful just to communicate and talk about some of the concerns. I'd recommend, based on the number of people that live where I live that have expressed dissatisfaction with the request, don't support it. Not a lot of people come out necessarily to speak, but in terms of what the experience being on the HOA board, there's not very much support for it. So from your constituency standpoint, I think it's more of an irritant, and it represents, I think the budget is $414 million. We're talking about roughly $50,000 to $60,000. So we're talking about 1/12,000th of a percent that we're asking for. And I think that's something that $752,000 spent on economic development. I think having downtown safe is probably one of the better economic development components that you guys have in your toolbox. So I'd recommend using that from existing budget. There's also been discussion about beautification. There's a lot of pretty parts downtown. But again, if we're spending $750,000 for economic development, I think a pretty, safe downtown is a good tool. The people who are downtown and trying to get other people to move downtown and paying for it, I think that's good economic development. So to upset a large percentage or a large number of your constituency or driving dollars into the city already, over 1/12,000th of a percent of the budget, I think is a mistake. So just wanted to share that, but I do appreciate the opportunity to talk to you guys. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to remind everyone that when people are up here speaking, they have a right to be heard and not interrupted. Whether you agree with what they say or not, everyone has a right to be heard and share their opinions. So I'm going to ask you that when people are speaking, that you let them be heard.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bliss.
And again, this is, this is an official city meeting, and there is city business to be had. And people have a right to be heard before we make a vote and cast a vote on an issue. Okay, others who wish to be heard?
Lucas Leverett, 1st Ward, Nashville import. You know this. I didn't come here to say this, I didn't come here to talk about this topic, but I sat here three feet away from these people, and I saw Nashville history unfolding right before my eyes. You don't want to create a war between downtown and the rest of your city. I've seen it. It broke my hometown. It's a stupid venture to get into, to pursue greed over the general population. It will ruin you. And when you get done, you will have a Kid Rock's Big Ass Honky Tonk, and I'm sorry, that's the name of it. And you'll have people hauled out of it for spinning colostomy bags over their head because that's what was happening when we moved out of Nashville to come here, where my better half is from, and start over and try to give you the advice and influence of what not to do to break your beautiful city. Yes, I'm passionate about it because I was born there. My grandfather was the photographer for the Grand Ole Opry for 30 years. My name is known in that town, and I don't like that yelling at you all the time is why you know it. I told those people when they were making boneheaded fights against the addition of scooters to our city, that they built its city and they didn't know how to manage its city. Don't build its city like fools. A friend of mine, a very dear friend of mine, has a degree in architecture and a degree in law at a crossroads of the built environment and its effect on crime. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I have to say it the right way. I'm from the South. When you make it look like nobody gives a shit, nobody gives a shit. And if you make it look like the only place you care about is downtown, you will reap negative rewards in the next 10 to 20 years. I also enjoy being a conundrum. You don't know what to do with me because I'm a big old nerd that helps run the Comic Con. I'm a member of the Chamber. I'm a member of the Business Association in Stockbridge. I'm wearing a Black Lives Matter shirt to that meeting on Thursday to eat lunch with them and explain to them, this is the whole package. I want a successful downtown. I like a big convention center, but I want every person in this room to have a $400,000 crosswalk, which, by the way, you're getting ripped off. If you're paying 400 grand for a crosswalk, you could turn around and give 200 grand to five people in any row in this room. They'll get YouTube and some concrete and paint and figure it out.
All right. There's no-
So, I know it's a government toilet seat to you, and it doesn't matter what you do with the money, but you can spread that money around. I live just on the West Side. Mr. Repert is my favorite up here because he actually exhibits some humanity to me. John, I like you, I love your booze, I love your restaurant, but I'm hearing you lick boots, and I'm not sure I can buy booze from a bootlicker. However, however, the bottom line is, I'm here to tell you these cautionary tales because I think this place is great, and it can be greater. But you can't do great when you only do it downtown. You don't want to go there. Trust me, I saw it. I left because of it. I had a beautiful convention center. I bought $35,000 of its $678 million budget. How do I know that? Because I figured out what my hotel rooms at my events gave it. You have to respect every investment from every citizen.
Thank you. Thanks. Your time is up. And I'm going to, before we go on, before we go on, and before I close this public hearing or recess, I'm going to remind you about the rules of this space. So we don't allow cheering, clapping, cursing. We want to make sure that people have an opportunity to be heard. And regardless of whether you agree with them or cheer them on, we want them to feel like they can voice their opinion. So I'm going to continue on with this before I close this public hearing and move on to our next scheduled public hearing. Again, this is specific to the special assessment for downtown. Hi, welcome.
I originally live in Byron Center, but my mom actually works here on Division in the Hispanic District. She works for a low-income health clinic that caters to underinsured and uninsured patients, which means I see a lot of poor people all the time. And it terrifies me almost that our city commission and you elected officials are thinking more about planting some flowers and fixing some cracked sidewalks than fixing the actual broken problems in our city. I mean, I see homeless people every day when I, like, visit my mom at work. And I'm 17. A 17-year-old should not be here, up in front of her commission, screaming for justice. And I just wish that the commission would open up their eyes to the real problems, which aren't not enough flowers and not enough good sidewalks, because no one cares about that when people are still dying in our city and there's nothing that you guys are doing about it. We don't have proper healthcare in this city. We don't have proper justice in this city. And I'd just like to see the money that we think about putting towards this kind of initiative into something worthwhile, into something that's worth building for our citizens, not just something performative. Thanks.
I'm Nico. I live in Grand Rapids. I feel like fixing downtown should be a priority. However, the way that you're prioritizing it is not okay, and it won't be effective. You have literal communities of people living outdoors downtown. So there's bigger fish to fry than a sidewalk, than some flowers. All this money that you guys propose to be used on flowers and, and crosswalks and things like that should be used to help house people, should be used to help people get the things that they need, that every human being deserves, before trying to make it look more beautiful for the rich people in this city. It's not okay to put rich, white lives above all other lives. It's not okay to do that. And I find it sickening for, specifically you, Ross Limbley, you. I find it very sickening for you to continuously come up here and sit and look like you care when you have the power to change things in this city and you continuously choose not to. I don't, I don't see why, why you've been shedding tears. I don't see why you've been giving condolences. I don't see why you've even, frankly, even keep showing up because you're not listening and you're not doing anything to contribute to solving the problem. You, you sit, every, every city commission meeting, we have rules. We have three minutes to speak. Not only do the city commissioners all speak for as long as they want to, which is contradictory, we're all adults. If y'all don't give us rules, y'all need to have some rules that you're abiding by as well. You guys are not above us. You guys are hired to work for us. And I feel like you needed a reminder of that. This is not okay. And we will continue coming back and continue to raise our voices, and we will be heard. It doesn't matter how long it takes. But I could tell that what we saying must be getting to you because you look tired. You look tired. You really do. I see all in your face. I see it. You tired, as you should be.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
Period. Hi, my name is Ally. I've lived my entire life here. Coming up here, wasn't actually planning on coming up here, but the fact that we're talking about spending money on flowers and paint for the sidewalk when there's literal people who are being killed in our streets, it's absolutely ridiculous. I heard the topic of economic development be brought up. And it's interesting because it seems like economic development is always a discussion when it comes to downtown, but it's never a discussion when it comes to primarily black neighborhoods like the 3rd Ward. Not, like I said, I've lived my entire life down here. I've been downtown, I can't even count how many times, and not once have I walked down the streets and think, hmm. You know what would really make this city a better place? Flowers. Paint on the sidewalk. No, what I think would make the city a better place is if we put that topic of economic development into other communities aside from just downtown, because there's more people that live in the city besides people that live in these skyscrapers downtown. And we all matter, we're important, we all pay our taxes. So why isn't our city benefiting us? Why aren't we getting, why aren't we getting paints on our sidewalks? Why aren't we getting flowers painted in the, in the 3rd Ward? I've noticed there's a lot of damaged sidewalks, and even in my neighborhood, and I live in the 2nd Ward. And what's being done about that? Why is the main topic, why are you guys so focused on downtown? Is it because only tourists come down here? Because I don't know anyone that would, you know, have a tour, you know, on the southeast side or in the 2nd Ward or anything. They always come down here, and they're always by Rosa Parks Circle looking at Breonna Taylor Way and other places. Is that why that's so important to y'all? Because if that's, if that's what it is, just say that. Because you guys are dancing around the topic, making it seem like, oh, it's for the community. It's important. It's not. It's not important. What's important is the fact that a man was executed in our streets, and you are doing nothing to even improve the neighborhood that he was murdered in. Maybe if y'all had that economic development in the 3rd Ward, Patrick Leoya would still be alive, and there wouldn't be such a need for overpolicing in that neighborhood. Y'all should all be ashamed of yourselves. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Again, this is for the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment.
Hi, I'm Mark. I live in Grand Rapids. Several years ago, a guy by the name of Dwayne Faust wanted to reimagine downtown. He had the money to do it. Unfortunately, even though he went to bid, unfortunately, the city manager, pre-Mark Washington, wanted, wanted a swarm of them out of more money because they found out the developer was black. And he told them, "F you, project, next." Now, you want to try to reimagine downtown again? Unbelievable. And spending a whole heap of money for planting flowers and painting crosswalks? You can get ordinary individuals to go to Meyer or wherever and buy, buy some seats for a couple of bucks, they can plant flowers themselves. And you get some sorcerers to, to paint crosswalks across the street. I understand that downtown has to have some improvements. But the improvements are going to the wrong things. And don't get me started on Van Damme Arena, which was wrongly built to begin with. All this at the expense of the taxpayers. And you have homeless people, and you have more and more homeless people as a result. This is not Sausalito. This is not San Francisco. Look at Oakland. Pretty soon, the Oakland A's, we went out of Oakland and headed to Vegas because they want to reimagine downtown Oakland. You better rethink about this. Because in the end, it could be more trouble than you think. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
My name is Dyden, resident of the 1st Ward. And although this is not the most topic I am the most informed about, I would like to reiterate, a lot of things have been said here because I do think their points really need to be hammered home. I would say, I don't necessarily have a problem with improving downtown. I don't think anybody here has a problem with improving downtown Grand Rapids. We just want to see that that money is spent efficiently and not, and not wasted on things that downtown doesn't need. We also, we also want to see other communities other than downtown have received some, received some of the same benefits that downtown receives and, and downtown gets. We also, we also want to see that it's, that the improvements that are being made to this city are focused on the people that live in the city, and not so much bringing in more tourists. And not, and I'm not saying that tourism doesn't have its benefits. It does potentially bring in more tax money for the city, for the city to then spend on its residents. I think it's, the residents should be the primary focus. And I think- the residents should be the primary focus, and I think, you know, with the pattern of the scooters and the focusing on downtown decorations, I think that you guys are going in up the wrong direction as far as improvements to the city of Grand Rapids. I wanna see that the residents are the focus of every single monetary decision on how money is spent in the city of Grand Rapids. So although I am not like necessarily an expert on this, it seems to be that the community all, all seems to agree that you guys aren't doing that, so I need you guys to listen to us. We all want you to listen to us, that's why we're here, and we've been frustrated because it seems like you have not, as you have ignored, you know, a lot of, I mean, me and fellow activists, you have ignored us on issues such as police brutality, so we don't necessarily expect to be heard on this issue, and we're all very frustrated. That I end my speech.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard on the Downtown Improvement District?
My name is Olabangi. I grew up here in Grand Rapids, unfortunately, but my, my thing is, if you care so much about your downtown, why don't you charge the officer who executed our brother Patrick Leoya? Cause there's people like me who think that, well, I should say, I don't give a damn about your downtown, if it was up to me, I'd burn the shit down. Cause how the hell you gonna oppress us and the nation we done built? How the hell you got the audacity to deprive us of civil rights? Not only civil rights, but in our human rights, in the nation we done built for free? You keep talking about downtown, to hell with downtown. So if you wanna see your downtown thrive, and if you wanna preserve it and beautify it, I think you should charge the killer cop, because I don't think it's gonna stand too much longer. That's just me, out of respect for the elders and the Leoya family, I wouldn't, you know, I ain't gonna initiate no kind of violence or whatever y'all be saying, even though we not violent, cause as Al Sharpton said, we not troublemakers, we troublebreakers. But my thing about it is, it's not gonna stand too long. Y'all, y'all remember what happened with George Floyd protest here? That shit went down in flames, even though we didn't do it.
Your language.
Even it, huh?
Please watch your language.
No, I'm not gonna watch my language, I gotta, first my, my first amendment right, I'mma, I'mma say what I gotta say. If you don't like it, you have to remove me, I'mma say what I gotta say. If you want to see your downtown thrive, what I think you should do is charge the killer cop. It's gonna go down in flames.
Thank you.
And if you think this is a so-called democracy, right? Patrick Leoya came here thinking that this so-called democracy was gonna provide him with a better life, but this ain't no damn democracy. I just watched all of y'all put y'all right hands over your heart, and you said, "To the republic in which it stands." To the republic in which it stands. This ain't no damn democracy, it's only a hypocrisy. And, uh, Coon, Missioner, Moody?
Oh, and enough, okay. All right, your time is up, your time is up, your time is up, your time is up. Actually, in this space, in this space, there are rules, and in a public city meeting, there are rules, and it's very clear, it's very clear. I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this public hearing and we're gonna move to the next one. We're gonna move to the next public hearing. All right, that public hearing is closed, and we, that will be referred back to our committee of the hall. So we're gonna work through to our next scheduled public hearing, and this is a city commissioner to hear, I'm closing that public hearing. We have one more scheduled public hearing where people have a right to be heard on an appeal. So, this is a city. I'm gonna recess this meeting if it continues to be disrupted. I have a scheduled public hearing where people have a right to be heard on appeal. So this, I'm opening, I'm moving to the next scheduled public hearing, which is a hearing on special assessment nuisance rule 8764, and we're gonna start it with our city assessor.
So, no, it's. So we just gonna skip over to room stuff?
No, we have another opportunity for a public comment, but I have a scheduled public hearing.
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor, city commissioners. I'm here before you to present the special assessment nuisance role that consists of unpaid charges for services or code violations that are still payable to the city of Grand Rapids that occurred from July 1st through December 31st, 2021. So property owners were sent notices on March 17th and notified of the charge in the appeal process. The special assessment role has been open for public inspection for the minimum required two weeks, and that was starting on April 4th through today. In addition, the assessor's office has also posted the special assessment role to the city website, and to date, we have received 17 appeals. So tonight, the city commission convenes as the board of review to hear appeals on these assessments, and tonight is the final opportunity for those notified to file an appeal. So I will be in room 921 to take any appeals, and also I have this deputy city assessor in the lobby on the main floor, in the event those that couldn't reach the 9th floor can file an appeal with the deputy city assessor. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. All right, so this public hearing is very specific to individuals who are listed on the nuisance role. So if your property or you are listed on the nuisance role and you have an appeal tonight to be heard, you can come forward to this body and request an appeal, so please be specific about the item that you're requesting an appeal about, and then as Paula said, we have city staff here to help you. So if you're here tonight to be heard on an appeal, again, this is for nuisance role 8764, you should have been notified appropriately, and you can come forward to be heard by this body, and then we'll have city staff follow up with you. So is there anyone tonight for this nuisance role? Go ahead.
Did Paula leave the room? Did she leave already?
Paula, yeah, she said she'd be out in the hall.
I have a question on an appeal for a specific address. I didn't have the list, it wasn't a part of the agenda, to see if, if Eric Jordan passed on that appeal, so I wanna make sure that she has that.
Paula, can you come back up? Commissioner Linier has a question. My apologies.
No, no.
Commissioners, any other questions for Paula?
Do you know, Paula, if Eric Jordan passed on an appeal, I think it came up last week? I'm forgetting the physical address, but I can look that up and make sure that I share that with you, I just wanna, if Eric specifically, I know he was working on it, so do you remember if he specifically shared anything with you about any of them? I did get an email from him. Okay. About it, I don't think that individual filed an appeal, but I do have that communication. Yeah, and I think his, I think that was, is there a specific form that he needs to complete, or just?
Yes.
Okay. So then I think we need to reach out to him because I think the email that he sent was his intent saying that he didn't agree, so I just wanted to make sure, because tonight is the deadline.
Right.
That that isn't missed.
Okay.
And we can talk further.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paula. All right, so anyone wishes to be heard on this nuisance role, is if your property is listed or you wish to file an appeal? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close that nuisance role.
I'm walking up here again.
Are you on the nuisance role?
Did you see, did you see me?
I, actually, are you on the nuisance role?
I know you can see me.
I asked you specifically, this is for only people listed on the nuisance role. Are you, do you have an item on this nuisance role?
Am I not gonna be affected by the nuisance role because I also spend my money downtown?
Well, it's not about downtown, it's, it's a, it's a, there's a list of people who have an opportunity to come and appeal a nuisance.
So only specific people get to talk on that?
Yes, actually, that is how it works. This is an appellate process.
Can I ask you a question?
If you're not on the role and you don't want to speak, I'm moving on.
How do we get, how do we get our stuff on the agenda?
Just shut that off. Okay, we're moving on, I'm gonna close that, I'm gonna close that nuisance roles appeal public hearing, and we'll move on to the last opportunity for public comment tonight. And before I open up public comment, I do wanna be clear, this is a lawful assembly of this body and we have city business, so there actually are rules for this space to make sure that this space remains a space where people can be heard. So for our last opportunity for a public comment, we ask that you share your name, the city that you live in, you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. If there's significant disruption, I will ask you to stop, we'll ask you to leave, or I will recess this meeting.
Can I say one thing before we start here?
Yes, go ahead, city clerk.
There's no need for everybody to get in line, we will get to everybody as we go through the process, just for the safety of the room of everybody in aisles, excuse me, do not interrupt me.
City clerk, city clerk, it's okay.
Do not interrupt me.
Say, we're gonna, we're gonna, all right.
Sorry, I'd like to continue, ju- just for, just for the room, there's no need to, need to stand, stand in line, so as, as people come, are done speaking, then people can get back, get in line, I just wanna make sure, just because we have a, we have a doorway and that.
Okay, there, there really, there are rules about disruption, there actually, there are laws and rules around maintaining decorum and disruption, and I want people to be heard, but they have a right not to be disrupted. So let this gentleman speak. Let's let him, let's let people speak and be heard. All right, go ahead, you, go ahead.
I got three minutes, give me three minutes, y'all. First thing, my name is Joseph Jamarien Spicer, get used to seeing my face. First thing we here for, I wanna say condolences and whatever else we can say to somebody that just lost their son with the Leoya family. From what I'm aware of, the officer's name was released today. It's a whole bunch I can't say about the situation, but we only have, what, two and a half minutes, so what I will say is this, we will, we will do this, I will do this. Let's cut the benefit of doubt. Let's say it was an accident, right? Let's just say it's an accident, let's say it is, right? A car collision is an accident too. If we get, if I get in a car accident and I kill somebody, right? I get charged if it's my fault. At the end of the day, this man killed somebody. You know what I mean? Do I think he did it on purpose? From my perspective, I can't speak for everybody else in the room, I don't think he did it on purpose, but he killed that man. They never gonna see their son again. I got two sisters and a mom, I'm the only boy. My family be devastated if I ain't come home. You feel me? I'm sure y'all have kids, and I know y'all ain't no just heartless motherfuckers like motherfuckers think y'all is, and excuse my language.
Please don't curse. Okay.
Can you turn my mic on again? Thank you. But somebody's son died. I, I feel like, everybody feel like y'all moving a little slow. Y'all moving a little slow, but y'all process cute and handle everything up so swiftly. Shit, y'all got downtown together faster than I even knew it, I watched this happen between my own eyes. I actually, when I was in high school, I remember all the money y'all put in, and I seen all the money didn't go to the south side. I remember that, but y'all put a theater downtown, and it's beautiful, I went there, I just seen a whack-ass movie the other day, it's beautiful, but y'all didn't do nothing for our community. Y'all do nothing for the south side of Grand Rapids, but y'all over here mad when people come up here and they upset. What do y'all expect? You live in a nice home, you live in a nice home, hell, I know you got a nice home, I see the tie, baby, but we out here on the south side struggling, we dealing with stuff in the city that y'all not really fixing. Nobody's fixing anything over here, and all we doing is come over here and talking, and everybody over here twiddling their thumbs, she half-listen to me, he don't give a damn what I'm saying, for real, but it's cool, cause y'all gonna see me, and y'all gonna see all these people in here. Everybody give him a round of applause, please? We here, and we not, and we not, I got 20 seconds, we here, and we not here to chart no problems and stuff like that, we not anarchists, we're not violent people, nobody here, black, white, Latino, nobody here is a violent person from the looks of it. From, from what it seems, we came here to try to solve a problem, but we cannot solve a problem without y'all help. At the end of the day, this city only thrive without, with the people, not just with y'all. Y'all don't have a job without us, so help us out and handle this business. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard? Commissioner Mayhew?
Yes, I, I'm not heated up, but I've, I've just come down to entering the, to record, to the record some minutes that was from March 19, 1996, where we did a lot of discussions about police, police brutality, brutality and stuff like that, and how to protect our communities dealing with excessive force and all that type of stuff. You know, there was a, the civilian appeals board, I'm, I'm just curious as to why that's not being used. We at the, in this community took 17,000 people to usher that in to this city, and now I sit and watch, and nobody's using the civilian appeals board, which was put together to deal with aberrant police behavior. We did that in 1996.
Say it again.
Yeah. And so I'm, I'm just curious, you know, we got over 17,000 signatures from people, you know, and that's, you know, that is, the excessive force complaints continuing, continuing, and continue, but then, you know, we gotta use what we've put together to deal with it. So some people say they want the civilian appeals board to have subpoena power. Well, if you can't get subpoena power from the institution, the people have to go out and put subpoena power on a petition and do a petition drive. You know, everybody's talking about subpoena power, you can't get it unless you do it yourself. The police department and the city of Grand Rapids is not gonna give you subpoena power. But then you can look at the city charter and see where it's missing at, and do what they call an initiative petition to put that on the, on, in the rules. You can do it yourself. You know, that's how we got to where we are today on this civilian appeals board. It took 17,000 people to do this, and now we sit back and it's not being used. I think that's really a disservice to the community, a disservice to those 17,000 registered voters that was in this city that did that, and so I would definitely like to see the civilian appeals board at least address some of these issues. Then, in closing, there was a incident on the corner of Fuller and Franklin, Fuller and, Fuller and, Fuller and something, but anyway, on Fuller, with a guy named Juan Yu, who's an African guy, this was back in the 90s, he got beat up because he couldn't navigate the language.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Yeah, but anyway, that's what happened.
Thank you.
You need to investigate that and see the dynamics of that.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hello, my name is Alexis, I have lived in this area for almost five years. There are no words to even attempt to fix this situation that we're in, it's something that the community has been warning you guys about for so long, something that you guys have willfully turned an eye against, something that now we sit here and I had no idea, we came up here to talk about gardens and sidewalks. I work with mentally and physically disabled people maintaining housing at least twice, three or four times a week, we have someone coming in off the streets begging for immediate housing. I can't do that, we have an eight-year waitlist, but you guys are building bars and theaters and all of these clubs and extravagant things, and look at you compared to us, look at what you're wearing compared to us, look at how you speak. You, Mayor Bliss, you're a social worker, I'm a social worker, how disgusting. Your values do not align with social work values, dignity of humans, value of service, what are you doing? Why is this, why, where is Christopher Schur? Is he on vacation? Being paid? What is this world? I mean, stop investing in things, stop investing in profit, invest in the people, invest in food, housing, medical, fucking, excuse me, sorry, excuse my language, I know, I know, I know, I'm not allowed, I, I mean, I, censorship, I can't, because there's all these adults, there's like one kid in the back I see, she probably has never heard that word, so my apologies.
Listening.
Apologies. It's just disgusting, and it's obvious that you guys have, are continuing to continue about, I mean, you guys get to go home, and you get to go to your fancy house with your, with your homes and your families, who probably aren't being bullied by police, who probably aren't facing homelessness, who probably aren't starving on the streets, but you don't care because you don't have to see it, because you would rather do something else, you'd rather invest in something else? This is our community, this is us, care about us, and justice for Patrick. Chris Schur needs to be locked up immediately. If I shot someone in the back of the head in the street, would I be sitting here talking to you right now?
No.
No, no, myself would be in jail, exactly where he should be for life. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
I'm Candace, and I would like you to get to know my face as well. I drug myself out the bed from a migraine to be here. I sit here in front of you today, and you talk about cursing and little things that don't matter, when we are in the middle of a war fighting for our lives. Cursing? The kids listen to cursing on TikTok every day. Are we banning that? No, but when we speak with passion, you call it aggression, and that goes back to why we're in this situation now, because every time we speak for ourselves and up for our communities, there's a problem. Oh, she's aggressive, he's cursing, they're problems, they're a nuisance, do something about those people. I don't like it. Who cares about cussing when someone was just murdered, executed? And not just him, let's get down to the bottom of it. The inner-city community is a failure at this point, and all you guys are talking about is a bunch of things that makes no sense to me. I don't even care to sit up here and talk about the sidewalks and the this and the that, when it's homelessness, it's people who are starving, it's just all type of things that's going on in the world. And here we sit, and you want to organize the lines and things like that, who cares? What you don't want is for us to be here, having y'all here till 1 o'clock in the morning is what y'all don't want. So you want to organize us and put us in our place, but that is not going to happen anymore. I hope that we all stand up for everything that we deserve from here on out and not let anybody get a breath or a wink of sleep or a lunch break around here. I also agree with, if it was up to me, we would burn this whole city down to let y'all know where we stand at, and then make you come back five years from now and rebuild, and rebuild, and rebuild, because that's all we're doing in our community is trying to pull ourselves up from the bootstraps every other day. Our communities are failing because we have nothing in our communities. When COVID came around and the pandemic, y'all shut down everything, all this, the mentoring, the basketball, the everything that we have for our children, and still to this day, I don't feel like any of that has opened back up for our children. We have nothing for our children when y'all are talking about sidewalks and flowers. Who cares about that? When our children are struggling every day in mental health and everything else that they struggle with, police brutality, violence, drug abuse in the community, and then y'all sit here with y'all attitudes and act like we're the problems? No, you guys are put in these positions to take care of the problems, but you're not being successful with doing that. So we're gonna come here every time we have an opportunity and speak on it, and I hope that we keep y'all here. If, if it was up to me, y'all would be here till 24 hours if it was up to me. I would come back up here 50,001 times if I could. I'm telling you, I'm gonna be a problem.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Good afternoon, beautiful people. My name is Deandre Jones, I'm left-handed as you can see, but, uh, I just wanted to say, personally, I don't believe in Jesus. I seen the fraternal Jor-Drar Ford, I'm a member of a fraternity, Pi Kappa Alpha, I'm a Alpha too, but I just gotta say that somebody being religious doesn't make them a good person. That does not make them a good person. Just because I'm spiritual don't mean I'm satanic, you know? That doesn't make sense. Y'all need to stop making excuses for people. For, what I want to show y'all is the participarity budgeting process. I know the city knows what this is.
Is he allowed to?
But I want to make sure I put this out there for the community. It's not a sign.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But I wanted to make sure that I put that out there for the community, because I keep hearing people say, we don't have, uh, funding, we don't have money. When people come up here to these meetings, they actually, this is on the agenda.
Deandre, can you just put that on the ground? I'm sorry.
Y'all know what this is, I'm not gonna keep explaining this, or I'm gonna keep saying it on every news outlet, every media outlet, every single outlet, because this is how we change our community, it's $2 million. My man said he stay in the Third Ward, it's a million dollars. I need you to put a proposal out there. If you don't understand a proposal, have somebody work with you on a proposal. This is how we change our community. Stop coming here and talking to these people about, if, listen, they give you a comment period to talk about if you don't like somebody's project. If y'all didn't like my project, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't care, but we have opportunities to change our community. This is our, my generation, we need to utilize these funds, we need to put these proposals out there, because when people come with these proposals, there's already a set agenda item, so they're gonna have, if you don't like it, you can voice your opinion, but stop acting like there isn't an opportunity for us to create change within our community, because this is for the community, by the community, and the community needs to be honest. I'm tired of getting on these media outlets and telling y'all about this, and then y'all come here and complain we need, we ain't got resources. I know it's $2 million, and it's not big, it's not empathetic or money, but it's a start, and we need to utilize this. So stop coming here complaining, saying there's no opportunity, when I keep putting myself out there, when I keep saying this, when I keep talking about diversity, equity, inclusion. They didn't know about it till I said it, and I been saying this at the city commission meetings, haven't I commissioners? Haven't I? Haven't I? I been saying this. So stop coming up here complaining, saying there's no money. These people already have money, that's what y'all not understanding, but the money that the city has, we can make a decision on where those dollars go, and we need to tap into that. We need to stop complaining, we need to start making proposals, because the city, listen, our community members is going, every single person in the world is gonna vote on projects that they need to see. I don't know what's going on in the Third Ward, I know, but I don't live in the Third Ward, I say in the First Ward. Please utilize the participarity budgeting process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others wish to be heard?
Hi, my name is Reggie Howard. I live in the Third Ward. I'm back again, only to tell you guys about our veterans, you know, and as I continue to fight and continue to push forward, and last time I was here, I told you guys about a project called Hero's Corner that I would like to see us do in the city of Grand Rapids, and I went back and I done my homework, and I found out there's no place like this in the state of Michigan. There's no place for a veteran to go to fill at home. We have homeless shelters, we have places where people with disabilities can go, but we have no place where veterans can go unless it's the VA. Our veterans, a lot of them don't want to go to the VA, and a lot of them just want to be around other veterans, and they need a place to fill at home so they can get out of their parents' basement and feel like they're worth something. We have a lot of veterans that returned back from the recent war, and we need to reach out to them. I went out to the airport, no one was out at the airport. We got a veteran room out at the airport that's not even being utilized, that's not even being talked about in our city. Inside our city, I found out it used to be an organization called Christmas Attics. Some of you might have known that, where it was a, a place where African-American veterans could go to. We have no other place like that in our city. I fought for this country, I stand up for this country, I stand up for my community, and I stand up for our city. I, I understand there's a lot of other people here that's a little upset and mad with the convention, but I do have to say this one thing, and I hope you guys hear me when I say this. We could be upset, but none of us deserve to give death threats to people that's in our city officials, and I say that because you may be upset about it, but nobody should be making phone calls threatening people's lives, and I know that for a fact. Well, no, that's not woe mag, that was happening to a pastor, so I'm just telling you, I belong to a city church in this city, I don't have to debate it with you, but I'm just saying, as we be American people, we should not be making death threats to people's families, because they are loved ones that, that suffer just like others. So I just want to tell you, I think that our city, as far as us for our veterans, we need more veteran housing for, for affordable housing for our veterans, we have veterans living on the street, we have veterans sleeping in cubbyholes, we have veterans that really need our help, and I ask you once again to just think about what we can do for our city, because as my time expires, I always remind you, some gave some, but some gave all. What will our city give for our veterans? Thank you.
Thank you, Reggie. All right, others wish to be heard?
Back again, Lucas, First Ward. So I was gonna come tonight and tell stories of my interactions with cops, from fighting religious constitutional violations in my high school where a cop was utilized to intimidate me, all the way to my ongoing fight with GRPD and much of Mr. Washington's chain of command to care about incredibly dangerous reckless driving on our street here in GR, where just this past Sunday night, we watched a Dodge Challenger doing about 80 in of 25 obliterate someone's cat right in front of our eyes. I was gonna help answer the questions, why is Lucas so angry? Why isn't he nicer? Those stories make me angry because I lived them, but mostly they make me angry because I know that I would not have lived to tell them if I were not white. I'm angry that I know that. But then Monday, the FOP comes out with a disgusting piece of theocratic propaganda in defense of a killer cop, whose name we already figured out a week ago, and in this loony diatribe, the police union pulls out all the stops, playing the, hey, he's got a black friend card, and the Jesus card, in lockstep with a long history of violent, abusive, powerful white people using religion as their get out of jail free card. It's disgusting, but expected, and it was right on time, because we've seen that playbook before. Some of us call this body out on shades of the same manipulation, using faith as a cop out. We call out your failure to vote in a way that supports your all-too occasional scrutiny of cops. We call out your support for a city manager who's failed to make a stand against those crooked police unions who conjure up the tripe to which I referred. The new chief deserves a chance to deliver on promises to clean up the department, but Washington has failed to. You all fail repeatedly to join in our necessary anger. You just keep trying to tackle this with West Michigan nice. I don't have any use for West Michigan nice, it sounds a lot like Southern nice, except Southern nice, people just work against you behind your back. West Michigan nice is a tactic for total avoidance of hard questions and difficult topics, thereby accomplishing nothing. You can't keep hiding behind nice, nice got us here. Nice is just code for acceptance of racism, classism, and pearl clutch reformed xenophobia. Your communities are getting browner and younger and less churchy, like it or not, and they don't have the patience for your games, and you've got to stop kissing the rings of vans and vases and serve the people. We all have to sit by and hope a GQP puppet of a DA will prosecute or yield to an attorney general who will, but you can get started on the words and the deeds to match that embrace the demands of the actual majority sitting here that are ready to vote you out. Get started on the deeds, you're several years, if not decades, behind. And Joel, I gotta say, two weeks ago, you're the only one that had nothing to say, sitting over there with your little bowtie, and then you're gonna admonish this room? That's a bad look, brother.
Your time's up, thanks. Thank you.
Hello, it is Emma again. I am from Grand Rapids, lived here my whole life. So Mayor Bliss, you seem to want to talk about rules. You seem to want to talk about proper conduct, giving people their time to speak. So, okay, first of all, proper conduct would be that a GRPD officer didn't murder somebody. Proper conduct would be there are people who have healthcare, everybody has healthcare. Proper conduct would be there aren't people living on the streets that don't want to. Proper conduct would be people feel safe in their homes. Proper conduct would be people feel safe when they walk by the streets, knowing that a police officer isn't gonna try to kill them. Proper conduct would be every single person here has a chance to speak as long as they want to, because let's face it, actually, I was gonna say that's the only time you listen to us, but I don't even feel like you're listening to us now. Mayor Bliss, you're sitting there with your stink face, and I know that you don't care what we're saying, you care about your feelings. You care, all of you care about how uncomfortable it feels to be yelled at. Let me tell you, actually, I don't know, I'm white, I don't know how uncomfortable it feels, how terrifying it feels to be black. I don't know how terrifying it feels to, to not have a home, to not know if I'm not gonna have a meal. I don't think any of you do either. So if I were you, I would stop talking and start listening. I'm gonna hold the rest of my time and just look at you, so you start listening to everybody.
All right, others wish to be heard? Hi, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I am Regina Ruth. I am a native-born citizen of Grand Rapids. I attended and graduated Grand Rapids Central High School, now Innovative Central, Calvin College, now Calvin University, and also Calvin Theological Seminary. I am an educator, a theologian, and a lifelong learner. I have been grieving, along with this community, and I have notes because I don't want to go over, and I am outraged, just like the youth who are out there crying. Why? Because of the senseless violence that is perpetuated in this city and in this nation. Patrick's death has been a catalyst for the cries of the people, and the cries are being heard by the Most High. The problem is that for centuries, we have had a system of two heads, one privileged and one oppressed. Whether it is earned or unearned, the privileged are the ruling class. This ruling class has dominated, intimidated, and manipulated Africans and indigenous people for centuries. Historically, we have a violent history in which the dominate, the dominant ruling class has burned, has lynched, has murdered, has raped, robbed, and terrorized my people. There is a solution. First, we must educate ourselves and each other, for the lack of knowledge is why our people are dying. This nation proclaims that they are under God. I ask you, what God? What God are you serving? Okay? And I want to ask you one more thing, and it was rhetorical, of course. Are you ready for the great judge? Are you a politician? A crooked politician? Or are you a humble servant? Because like Marcus Garvey said, it's one God, the Creator, one aim is to please Him, and one destiny is to hear Him say, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant."
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Kenneth Cortez. I'm back. First, I want to say justice for Patrick Loyola. We're still waiting for that justice to be served. I want to talk about reasonable suspicion and probable cause. For a person out in the street, I can be detained by the police under reasonable suspicion. They can catch me swerving, they can pull me over and try to find something wrong with why I'm swerving, maybe I'm just dodging these potholes, right? So, but then once they find something, now probable cause, you may have smelt the drink on my breath, now, okay, you're arresting me. Reasonable suspicion, while Christopher Scher had an entire Reasonable suspicion, while Christopher Sher had an entire video of him chasing a man, which you're not supposed to do anyways, there was no crime that he knew originally was committed. He followed him, then ran his plates. You're hunting for somebody. I also have a video, and I wanna just say this, two weeks ago, I actually had his picture in my phone, and I was gonna expose it, but due to the slim chance it might not have been him when I was up here on this podium, I didn't wanna ruin a whole man's life. But we all knew, y'all knew too. So what I'm saying is that, where is it? I've been scouring, I spent this weekend scouring the, the Grand Rapids Police Union contract, right? Where is it that their, their leave of absence is supposed to take this long? He's still getting paid after killing somebody. He's on vacation after killing somebody. Why is he getting paid? And I know this isn't y'all's problem, I get that, but the people wanna know, why is it taking so long? Because, again, we'll go back to reasonable suspicion was that there was a crime getting ready to be committed because he was chasing a man for no reason. It was a misdemeanor, at best. Write that man a ticket, you already had his friend in the car. Write that man a ticket. You chased him down, Christopher Sher, I hope you're watching. You chased him down, and then on top of him, you were mounted on top of him, and the UFC, dude was defenseless, man. You pulled your gun out, and you shot him. Now, at that point, probable cause, because if I would've shot a man in the back of the head, I would be buried under a prison right now, or dead, when the police pulled up on me. So he's still sitting there, getting paid, right? And now we're, as everybody else is saying, we're talking about one hundred and eighteen million or however much y'all spending on the amphitheater, you know, cool, cool concerts and stuff, but what that's causing is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar houses on six being fuller. Let's talk about that. Like, how is that causing, pushing black and brown people out past Kentwood now, into places with Trump flags where they're not welcome? People ain't welcome out there, but y'all wanna push them out there. And I'll be back in two weeks, maybe next, to talk about this.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
My name is Bella. I am from the Third Ward, and I've been watching you on your phone dozing off the entire time, so I'm gonna need you to look at me. Police officer over on the right.
Okay, okay.
Look at me right now, and y'all need to listen good.
Okay, you, you need to speak to this body, okay?
She can speak to whoever she wanna speak.
But you, we're the ones here listening.
I'll try and use my three-minute timer wisely. Why are racist police officers, AKA murderers, getting away with killing people? No matter what a person does, nobody deserves to die. If they're really that bad, most likely, they need mental health. Maybe they're not okay. And why are y'all getting promoted when, if I were to walk down to the corner store right now, there are so many unhoused individuals sitting in the streets while police officers are getting new guns and cars? Why are schools and hospitals so underfunded? My teacher has to buy her own supplies. We do not, what we need, what we do not need is property over people. We need people equal to people. A human life is gone forever once it's done.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Arianna, and I live in the Third Ward. First of all, I wanna start off by saying, you, this entire time, have been on your phone dozing off, and you have been kicking your legs. I see you're real bored.
Talk to us, please.
Okay, I'll talk to you. First of all, you're fired. For, for good, you're fired. Whenever my stepdad leaves the house, my stepdad is a black man, I get worried. I sit in my room, I, I have my phone right next to me, waiting to make sure I get a notification that he is okay, because we have GRPD on our streets for the fourth time this month, for no reason. Once they're done doing what they're doing, they're still sitting there, mm, maybe three, four hours, doing what? Sitting in a circle, talking. Each and every one of you, you're all fired. Also, I'm gonna let the rest of my time be.
Okay. All right.
Mayor Bliss, we could use a change of style. You could part your hair on the other side. Me too. I'm trembling right now, not because I'm scared to talk, or because of the crowd, because I'm scared of you, and I'm scared of you. I'm scared that, since my stepdad drove home, drove here from our home alone, I'm scared for him to leave, because I don't want him to be alone, because I don't want him to get pulled over and killed for no reason. You look real guilty, you look like you're about to cry. Please do. Fake tears. Every time someone has come up here, each and every one of you has shook in your head, yeah, yeah, you're so right, but none of you are listening. Shake your head at me, cuz it's meaningless. It's just sad to think about the fact that a white woman is you.
All right, others who wish to be heard?
I'm Casey from the Third Ward. First of all, I'm raising a white son, and I would encourage him to be the white guy in the vest, not the guy in the uniform or the suit. We don't need the system, the system needs us. If we don't show up for the system, there isn't one. You don't show up for us ever. I went to Patrick's funeral. I arrived at ten fourteen AM. It was supposed to start at ten thirty. It started after eleven, because of the publicity stunt that it was. It was after twelve thirty before I heard the word Patrick. I heard a lot of, "God bless you, thanks for being here today, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner," with the, with the, you know, handshakes and whatnot. It's disrespectful. And then Womack went on camera and threw dirt, literal dirt, on Patrick's grave. That's the last time his family is ever gonna see him again. Yasasi, you had a private meeting with somebody off the clock, back when we were JFBL, where you said a lot about your personal feelings towards us? I just wanted you to know that we saw that in its entirety. I live in the Third Ward, right? And so, who I have standing up for my ward is Lanier, who I heard isn't running again, and Moody, who spent his time apologizing for all the stuff he said. He literally begged for his position, saying, "Please, I failed you, please give me another chance." He shrivels smaller and smaller in that seat every other week. So it's just, you know, it's hard for me to have much to look up to. You know, I braid hair, so I have a lot of black women as clients, right? So we talk about local politics all the time, right? So one of my clients, her teenagers were pulled over by the Grand Rapids Police and handled incorrectly. You know who she called about it? Me. You know why? Because it's the grassroots organizers that show up for the community. I told her to come here and tell her story, and I told her to show up to our boots-to-the-ground things. So I thank her for coming here and sharing the story, and for showing up for our boots-to-the-ground things. Then I watched Brandon, Brandon Davis chase her out to tell her that he could offer some sort of thing where she files paperwork, right? And then the police investigate the police to see what happens with the police. You see why she came to me, right? Cute, though, Brandon, we know you're gonna follow the law. That's the problem. The law is not for us. We don't need you in this seat, we need you in the street, cuz when you don't show up for the system and they don't meet your quota of face, what are they going to do? I'm sick of your protocol responses. I hear you, you don't understand, my position is limited, but I can't get help if I'm not at the table. I'll follow the law. Just watch the morning meeting, and you'll get the answers to all your questions. Tell me what you can do, tell me what policy you're challenging and changing. Make police supply their own liability insurance, stop accepting donations from the police union, and then claiming to be unbiased. Make meetings accessible to all.
Thank you.
My name is Donnie, and I live in the Third Ward. I'm here to speak on behalf, first and foremost, justice for Patrick Leoya. First and foremost, this meeting needs to be more accessible to the handicapped population of Grand Rapids, so that they can also be heard as well. So call lands and a better meeting point would be about damn time. It needs to be more accessible to the people that wanna be out here and wanna be heard, because, again, conservatives can be, conservatives can come up, show up in the thousands, mad because of a mask mandate, and you, and guess who opens up their doors? DeVos. Guess who has a place downtown? DeVos, your boss, all of your bosses. I'm here to talk about, I'm here to talk about the brutalization of GRPD. I'm here to talk about the execution of Patrick Leoya. It's disgusting. We've been telling you that the nature of GRPD has been building and getting more disgusting as we got here, but now we're here. I attended a funeral and watched all, every single one of you get good PR. I watched you get good PR. It's disgusting that you need recognition when it, when someone is murdered. It's disgusting that you even get recognition at a funeral, because this is blood on your hands. This is blood on all of your hands, especially you, Mark Washington, because you specifically said that you don't wanna defund the GRPD, because you think that they're helping. You don't even live on the Southeast Side, so we need you to shut up, you're fired. Anita Hitchcock, Anita Hitchcock, my soul hurts and burns for you, because guess why? Because you turn your back on your people. I told you that your people are being brutalized by GRPD, and we are coming out here to peacefully, hmm, we are coming out here to protest, okay? And we get brutalized by GRPD, and you don't play a hand in helping us. So you, your soul's gonna fi, it's gonna be on fire from here on out, just to let you know, you are fired. Sunita Lanier, you're taking a seat, but just to let you know, you're fired immediately, effective immediately, tonight. GRPD needs to have their own insurance, so that if y'all don't wanna abolish qualified immunity, which I said, which we get, the powers that you have, we understand that completely, one hundred percent. We say abolish, abolish qualified immunity, so that y'all can get behind it, but y'all don't understand, because it's not your people that's dying. We are demanding that GRPD have their own insurance, so that these people right here can be liable when they execute the members of the community. Because the only thing that this community has demonstrated is that they get to, for example, that police officer right there is wearing his body cam on his chest, this police officer right here is wearing his body cam on his belt. What is the procedure? What is it? Black lives matter!
My name is Brian Foster. The last time I was here, I spoke to the historic position of this execution of Patrick Leoya. I spoke to the unilateral war. The police have been waging against my people for near a hundred years. I spoke to the increasing military militarization of the police in this city and around the country, and, but I wanna say that, that was because I had, the video had not come out yet. I was unable to personalize Patrick's death, because I didn't know how he died. We had no information, except that the police officer killed him. So right now, I wanna, I wanna personalize this a bit. I just, have any of you faced violence? For real violence? Cuz Patrick did, he ran from a whole nother continent to escape violence. And you know what violence does to you? It makes you fear more violence. As someone with PTSD, if that man had put his hands on me, as he did with Patrick, for no reason, Patrick was stepping around the car, probably to get, to get his license from his friend, who was in the car, I would've run too. I work with children, traumatized children quite often. Touching them can send them into a panic. Touching them can send them into convulsions on the floor, I've seen it with my own eyes. And so I know Patrick's mind state when that officer grabbed him from behind. It is disgusting that the police can be afraid when not a single blow had fallen on them, enough to murder a man in the street, but we are not allowed to fear for our lives. Was Patrick wrong to be scared? He's dead now. He's dead now. He was right to be scared. So everyone talking about the things he did wrong, the things the police officer did right, it, it's, it's a moot point. Patrick was scared, he ran, he was trying to get away, probably not even to run away. This is a issue of police power. The police are a hammer of white supremacy, and whenever there's a black body beneath them, we are not given the benefit of the doubt. So we need to talk about the tenor of this debate, and we need to stop tone policing people who have been brutalized by the GRPD. I have myself, on more than one occasion. So we need to start instituting policies into the police, we need to disarm the police, we need to teach police how to actually interact with people and not be absolute meatheads. Absolute, absolutely thirsty for power, in every situation they're in. Yes, I'm talking to you two, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, others who wish to be heard?
I'm Chelsea, one of the local grassroots organizers and revolutionaries here in Grand Rapids. So many of my people are being killed by police on and off camera at alarming rates, and sadly, in most cases, due to this corrupt system, they just get covered up. My people know trauma and pain all too well, due to slavery, lynchings, forced sterilizations, medical experiments, and now it's police brutality. These police, these police officers was once known as slave patrols, now they are just the KKK and some coons dressed in blue and black uniforms. This system was created exactly the way it was supposed to be, to benefit only the white man or woman. There's no reforming or rebuilding an already broken system. Since we don't get no justice, y'all get no fucking peace at all. Like, my brother and sister just said, we have to shut this shit down, all the way down, by any means necessary. That even means burning every single thing down in this country. I'm angry, literally boiling with rage. We've been telling you for years that a black man or woman is going to be killed by one of these officers if you don't start holding them accountable. Y'all have done nothing, nothing but think of more ways to make money or spend money. Now, after a black king is murdered, y'all want to create community conversations, healing sessions, and getting together to talk? Where was this energy before Patrick? Fuck you and fuck your conversations.
Okay, okay, please, stop the cursing.
No, you're not about to censor me.
Stop the cursing, all right.
I'm sick and tired of seeing this performative activism done by all of you on this board, GRPD, politicians, and every other official that has been using Patrick's murder as a publicity stunt and photo op. It's sickening and disgusting to see y'all come to Patrick's celebration of life, around his family in general, like, y'all aren't just as much to blame as GRPD is. Karma's a bitch, and I hope she really fucks y'all life up.
Okay, enough, enough.
Fire, arrest, convict, indict the killer cop.
All right, no more. All right, all right. Time's up. All right, others. Okay, the, this, this, okay. Okay, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna recess. Okay, we're gonna recess until decorum is, we're recessing commissioners for ten minutes. We're recessing commissioners for 10 minutes.